Call this meeting in order six thirty-three and start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome everyone. I'll now turn things over to the superintendent for the superintendent of schools. I'm sorry. Celebration of excellence. I'm way ahead of myself and I'm on my wrong page of notes here.
Thank you very much. So we have some exciting news to share this evening. The first one is regarding the Hobie Award and it gives me great pleasure to announce that Michaela Maynard is this year's Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Recipient. Way to go, Michaela. Since nineteen fifty-eight, the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Program, HOBE, has provided leadership development training to positively impact the lives of thousands of high school students in the US and abroad nationally. HOBE programs allow high school sophomores to realize their leadership talents and apply them in becoming effective, ethical leaders in their home, school, workplace, and community. Students attend a three-day seminar to participate in hands-on leadership activities, meet leaders in their state, and explore their own personal leadership skills while learning how to make a positive impact in their community. Teachers at each high school nominate a grade ten student who exhibits the following traits and skills: outstanding communication, critical thinking, creative problem solving, strong decision-making, sensitivity to others, charismatic personality, courage to speak out and challenge, as well as an interest in community service. Michaela received multiple teacher nominations. Michaela is a role model to her peers. She takes rigorous classes and participates in a variety of extracurricular activities. In the classroom, Michaela is a strong advocate. She is comfortable asking clarifying questions that enriches the learning environment of others. She joined the volleyball team in ninth grade and quickly became a leader amongst her peers. She strives to help make sure everyone's voice is heard and they work together to be successful. Responsible, outgoing, and charismatic, Michaela is the type of student teachers leave in charge or pair new students up with to make them feel comfortable and welcomed. Wherever Michaela goes, she brings a lot of positive energy with her and helps everyone feel more comfortable when she is around. Michaela will be representing Bolton High School at the HOBE Leadership Conference at Southern Connecticut State University in June. Michaela, congratulations on this wonderful honor to you and to your family. Well done. Would you like to say anything, Michaela?
Oh, I was saying thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations. And our next award this evening is a new award called the CLU Award, and it is my honor to share this year's recipient of the Community Leadership Workshop Award, Ms. Grace Osborne. Grace, congratulations to you. The Community Leadership Workshop, CLU, is HOBE's free introductory one-day leadership program for high school freshmen that is designed to help develop critical thinking skills by actively involving participants in experiential learning and critical dialogue. HOBE CLU recipients participate in group activities, engage with local community leaders, and conduct community service projects. Clues are organized, developed, and implemented by local volunteers, HOBE partners, and HOBE alumni. Bolton High School asked faculty to nominate a student they feel possesses the following traits or skills: outstanding leadership potential, strong communication skills, critical thinking, creative problem solving, strong decision-making, sensitive to others, charismatic personality, as well as the courage to speak out and challenge. Grace also received multiple nominations for her outstanding leadership skills. In the classroom, Grace works very hard and has a very rigorous schedule. She's always willing to offer assistance to anyone who needs it and is proving to be a strong role model for classmates. Whenever teachers provide feedback to Grace, she is very accepting of it and will work hard to improve whatever areas she feels she needs to. In the short time she has been at Bolton High School, the staff have seen Grace in all of her strengths and abilities and are so impressed with her to thrive in and out of the classroom. Grace is very outgoing and has shown that she thinks things through before acting on them. Grace is also already very involved in extracurricular activities, both in and out of school. She's on the volleyball team and has taken a very strong leadership position on the court. Grace is giving given coaching to help improve her ability. She works hard to fix her mistakes and becomes the best player she can be. While volleyball keeps her very busy, she's also trying out for the drama production, which will be held later this year, which is also going to keep her very busy. She's also very involved outside of school and keeps herself busy with various community service opportunities. Grace is proven to be an all-around leader and will put to good use what she learns at CLU here at Bolton High School and in the community of Bolton. Grace, a well-deserved honor. Congratulations to you and to your family. Well done. Would you like to say anything, Grace?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well done. And that concludes our celebration of excellence for tonight.
All right, congratulations to both of our recipients. Move on to comments from the audiences. Is there anyone out there who would like to make a comment from the audience this evening? Not hearing anyone. Move on to additions to the agenda. Do we have any? You want to move that Italy trip up?
Yes, if we could please move the Italy trip up, that would be great.
Okay, I was kind of anticipating that. Move it up to now?
Right, yeah, D one. There we go.
Okay.
All right, I saw. There we go. Mr. Giblin, you are on, sir.
Yes, I I need to know who to send my Google slideshow link to, though, because who's actually showing slides?
Okay, can you send it to Monica and hopefully she's able to pull it up?
Should be able to screen share?
Oh, actually, she's she allowed you to share your screen.
Hmm. I have to stop here.
Yeah, get up the stop. Oh, I see it now. Okay. I don't use Zoom much, so give me one second. There it is. So can you see that then? All right, it looks good on my end. Yeah, all right. It's a little different than Google Meets. All right, so I copied out like the stuff that's really important from like the whole proposal. So it's just a sale, some slides to show you that to keep us like, you know, keep sort of like the important points in front of you at the same time. So hopefully April twenty twenty-four, somewhere during the week of break, a couple of days before maybe. So those dates are really approximate because those could change, but it's basically April break approximately next year, whenever, you know, mid-April. They can change that very easily. So it's been a while, but this is the fifth trip I've done with the high school for this. So it's the fifth trip I've organized. One trip for COVID was canceled, obviously, and I do want to keep using EF Tours. They've done a really good value for what the money is. And they did a really good job last time of getting us out with minimal cost to our students, and they still have a lot of things in place to protect for that. We'll go into updates, changed a little, but they still a lot of COVID related.
Excuse me one second. Mrs. Peterson, can you please mute? Thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
All right, and I, because I want to say like, they've changed some of the policies, so we do need to look at that. They do still have a lot of COVID-related policies. So there is also, it's a very large company, it's international. They have offices, their main office actually in Zurich, Switzerland. They are financially stable and they are able to deliver what you're paying for. Some other companies in the industry have had some rough times financially. They are not in that sort of situation. So just want to clarify that, too. They're very financially sound. So I'm thinking of doing the Venice CC Rome Pompeii kind of tour again. Florence is in there, too. That got left off, unfortunately. Shows you I like Rome better. Anyway, so if you go through those cities, it's kind of the standard tour where you get to spend at least a day in each city. They get sort of the sample of Italy because everyone has different interests. Some people want Rome. Some people really want to go to Florence and buy that leather item they've really always wanted to get are there. Or they want to buy a gift for someone and then obviously Venice is sort of just, it's worth going to Venice at least once. It is a very unique place. So it's going to be one of those really standard Italy tours, but we do go to Pompeii, though. That says optional here. It's not optional on my tour because the curriculum is all based in Pompeii. So they really do need to go see Cacili's house and see all those things that we learned about for years before they get to go. They do have an extensive worldwide emergency support system. So, you know, there is all this stuff they provide where they have twenty-four-hour support on the phone. You have your twenty-four-hour tour guide with you. All that stuff's provided with the fee for the trip. So there's really no issue there. They have an office in Rome. I think, I think they still have an office in Rome. They have an office in like every country in Europe. It's hundreds of offices around the world. So they really do have offices everywhere. They do have some general liability insurance that's provided for the school district, by the way, and that comes with the trip itself. But what really matters is that they offer a lot of protection to the students through this company. So the peace of mind policy has always been there. That's so that we can adjust the trip slightly about a month and a half out. If something changes, like we can't go in April anymore for some unforeseen reason, they'll move it to a few months up. They'll move it a month back. That's always been something they've done, which changed with COVID now is they they offer at no additional cost, just part of the trip, that if you were to get COVID on the tour and have to be quarantined separate from the rest of the group, that they will assist with changing your flights and doing all that stuff for the tour. I don't have to do it. I just call someone. They take care of everything. So someone, you know, knock on wood, someone was to get sick with COVID during the trip in April twenty twenty-four. If it's still a issue, then I don't see it going away. But if we're on that tour and they get slightly sick, they can be isolated in a normal hotel room. They can go on a different flight home. That's all taken care of by the company. So is there any questions about that? Because that's really the big change is they're no longer letting you cancel your tour for COVID, but they're providing support during the trip for COVID. So if someone were to get mildly ill from COVID, it would be taken care of. In addition to the medical insurance provided, they can see a doctor. That stuff is provided in the tour, in the basic package. So they have changed some of that stuff slightly. So.
Question on the making the accommodations. I'm assuming a chaperone would have to stay as well. So would that cover the chaperones adjustments?
Yes, yes. So they would make arrangements for that. So it's one chaperone per six students traveling. So there would hopefully be I'm thinking if we bring about two, two shop, two to three chaperones, if that were to happen, then those people would stay probably in that city, unfortunately. But.
And we may, we may just, if I could, Paul, please, because we've done this previously one other time, spent an extra administrator. So that, you know, because, because who knows what could happen. So I think we'll have to cross that bridge because that's a great question, Sue. And if we're still in the COVID era, I guess, then that's something we can look at for sure.
Right, so it's it's at least one chaperone per six included with the way the trip is structured. So it'd be very possible to have even more potentially if we need to. So it is a thing we can cross if it comes to that. Definitely. So, but they are making the commitment to make that happen for, to provide that kind of like extra coverage. So they are trying to do that. Any other questions about that then, or before we move on from that topic, I guess? Okay, hearing none. And then the traditional, like, what does the insurance package actually do? So there is the global travel plan, which is your typical lost luggage plan. It's very normal, basic sort of coverage. But they do now offer a protection plus plan. This is their solution going forward to I'm just not comfortable with traveling at this time. What can I do? So for, I think it's, I want to say it's three hundred dollars more than the price of the trip. They can purchase this insurance plus plan and they can pretty much cancel for any reason they really want to, really close up to the due date. So individual, an individual could make that decision on their own to say, I don't, I'm not comfortable anymore. So this is how they would get their money, most of their money back at this point. They'd pay the insurance premium of about, I think it was four hundred ninety-five dollars, and that would cover everything on the trip, but also cover them canceling the trip in full. So they'd pay their four ninety-five premium, of course, but they would get back their thirty-eight hundred dollars if they want to cancel for pretty much any reason, like it could be, they just need the money back. It could be they feel it's not safe to travel anymore, but they can make that decision on their own without having to call the company, negotiate, and go through a whole bunch of red tape to get that or, you know, it's a pretty straightforward claim process. It's, I don't want to go. So they're offering that out now for a reasonable fee, really, when you think about it, because it's pretty much any reason to cancel. So and as I was alluding to, it's not really that much higher than it used to be. I pulled up my old documents. It was about, I want to say in twenty nineteen-ish, it was like thirty-seven hundred dollars, and now it's thirty-eight fifty-nine-ish. That doesn't include a two hundred dollar early sign-up discount that will, I probably can have them reapply to this month. I'm not really starting until this month. And the quote for the insurance was if you add three hundred dollars, that's the insurance. So if I can, you know, get the early sign-up discount put back on this, which they usually do for me. And they bought this insurance package. It's just shy under four thousand dollars, but considering inflation, that's not that much higher than it used to be. It's pretty fair for a nine-day trip. That's all-inclusive with all your dinners, all your hotels, all your tour guides, all your museums, twenty-four-hour tour guide who's there to assist you anytime, twenty-four-hour hotline where they can take care of your, you know, COVID quarantine if that country, if Italy requires a quarantine, if you happen to test positive. Even if you're like asymptomatic, you're still staying in a hotel room. They're going to cover keeping you in that place and complying with those laws. So they really do take care of all that. So it's pretty all-inclusive. The only thing you're purchasing is maybe a cheap lunch for about six, seven, ten dollars during the day and not every day even. Because you go to Pompeii, they buy us lunch, too. It's part of the fee there, too. So it's all the ground transportation all the way up and down Italy. It's really all-inclusive. It really is no gotchas. There's no secrets. It's everything included. And finally, how to, how to help them get there. They do have an automatic payment plan, so it's not, they don't have the four thousand dollars in their bank account right now. They can do a monthly payment plan that breaks it up and makes it much more affordable and budgetable. They pay EF Tours. They don't pay me. I don't deal with that either. It's very trans, clean, transparent that way. They do have sort of a GoFundMe kind of page that they can put that up there for like, if they want to get funded for this for their birthday or Christmas present instead of getting something, they could do that. Obviously, my, my club will do fundraisers as much as we can do, as much as they're willing to do. But I'll also point out that several students in the past have said to me, I got a summer job and I was pretty much good to go. I got, you know, I worked on June, July, August, the summer. I saved my money up. I paid for a lot of it that way. So they also could get a summer job between now and then. And earning it makes it more rewarding. I've always felt that way about this trip, too. It's definitely something, they're juniors and seniors typically, so they can get a job this summer, too. It's always good to pay some of it that way, too, I feel personally. And they do have a small scholarship thing, but that, the award, the awards of that are not going to cover the whole trip. They're five hundred dollars here, you know, there, but they should look into that, and I can help them look into that. They want to at least get some money. Maybe they're spending money through this this fund, this global scholarship fund program they have.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that's pretty much like, that's the whole thing.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Are there any other questions for Paul? All right, hearing none. Chair Rania will need a vote on this, please.
Yeah, sounds like a great trip, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the Italy trip for twenty twenty-four. Was it April?
August. August. Oh, sorry, April. Yeah, I'm sorry, April. Yeah.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ria.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
I'm not going, oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Scott.
I'm just, I'm not, I'm not going to deny anyone the opportunity to go see the Pantheon.
I was gonna say, you're, you're in the same room, Maya.
Yeah, exactly.
Cool. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Or abstaining. Okay, have fun. Hopefully that goes off great this time. I'm excited that we're able to do things like this again.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, on to routine business and the approval of minutes. I'm looking for a motion now to accept the minutes of the October twelfth, twenty twenty-two Board of Ed Business Meeting.
Actually, I think that date is wrong. Sorry. I think it's, I think so. Yeah, sorry. Nope, it's correct. Sorry. Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Anyone for a motion to approve October twenty twelve, twenty twenty-two Business Meeting Minutes?
Still moved. This is Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll second. Ria.
Thank you, Chris and Ria. Do we have any comments or edits on these minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
So abstained. Okay, let's pass. And now we are on to Board of Education Committee reports and Kappa.
So the Kappa meeting did, the Kappa group did meet, I think it was last week, to kind of put our list together for the Board of Education items to be included on the fiscal year twenty-four project list that we're going to be being, meeting next week with the Board of Selectmen.
Excuse me, one second. Monica, can you share? Let me share. Let me have the screen for a sec, please, so I can pull up the Kappa list.
You should be able to share with the regular screen share.
Okay, there we go. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Scott.
Do we want to, are we talking about just next priority list or recapping?
Yes.
So do we want to? The list that's going to be discussed for fiscal year twenty-four.
Correct.
So the items on this list, there, we have six items that we've put on, that we're proposing to be added to the master list. The first is the BCS Fire Alarm System Upgrade. The, the existing fire panel is made by GE, but they no longer support that panel or they won't be after twenty twenty-three. So if any issues come up with that after twenty twenty-three, we will not be able to get parts or, or repairs done to it. So we figure we got to get this underway right now to get it replaced. The second item is the District Utility Truck. Couple of years ago, I believe, we did a kind of a deal with the town. We, we had a truck on our list, but town bought a truck and we got their hand-me-down. It's ended up being in worse condition than anyone thought. And so we're looking to be purchasing a new truck with a plow for for this school properties. The third item is the BHS Storage Building. This was something that was on the list last year. It's been partially funded. We're looking at having a four-bay garage added to put our, our vehicles in and our, some of our sports, our field sports equipment. The, like I said, it was partially funded, so we're just, the, the amount here is, would be the final amount, so we can get that going under contract. The fourth item is doing an HVAC assessment at BHS. This is separate than the one we had just had done for BCS. This has to do with the the geothermal system that was installed when the project, you know, the new high school project was done. It's coming close to a lot of the, the components of the system are coming close to their life cycle replacement needs. There are a number of, there's a lot of parts and pieces that go with it. There are two main pumps, fifty-three heat pump units, two makeup air units, nine energy recovery units, eight exhaust fans, and two ductless split units. Like I said, the typical lifespan is about fifteen years for these. So what we want to do is get some professional engineering help to determine what's the right replacement schedule and hierarchy of, of need. And then number five, related to that is that they're currently having an issue with one of, one or two of the pumps. And so that I think we're looking to have a, one of the pumps either rebuilt or replaced, depending on cost. And then finally is the BHS Public Address System. The CPO, CPU needs to be updated. Again, it's, it's timing out on its technology lifespan. So this is the list that I think has already been sent. Is that correct to the Board of Selectmen?
Not yet.
Or no, we're just saying it wants to be approved tonight?
Yep, correct.
If we approve it.
Yeah, so I just want to make everyone aware that even though we're missing, John's still waiting for an estimated cost on the fire alarm system upgrade. The Board of Selectmen has scheduled their first Kappa meeting for the fifteenth of November because it has to be by charter within thirty days of the three-board meeting. So I don't think that the town is going to be fully done with their list either. I think it's going to be a, an evolving process this year for both groups because normally we don't meet till late in December or into January previously. So we are looking for a motion to approve this list. And I think just for, so everybody can see as, as we plan out in fiscal twenty-five, we have the other district pickup truck with plow, geothermal pump two at the high school, HVAC heat pump and rooftop units, phase one. That's just a TBD. Chris, I'm sorry, you had a question.
Yeah, is there a reason that we have, we're asking for two trucks?
Because we have two different trucks.
So remember, we, we were, these, these weren't on the, they weren't next to each other on the, the list a few years ago.
Right.
We had the one, our need was a couple of years ago when it was on the list, and that's when the town gave us the truck that we do have that turned out to not really be a great deal for us.
Okay, so it's just coincidental that they're both two thousand and five models?
That truck didn't do have the life that we had hoped it was going to have.
Okay, thank you.
And then in twenty twenty-six, the district handicap van replacement. Honestly, I had to check that because I felt like I was, we, we just did that, but we did that a while ago. And then the phase two of the HVAC heat pump units. And then in twenty twenty-seven, zero, two, zero turn mowers, BHS HVAC, possibly, I should say, maybe phase three, if we need, if we, has to go out that far. BCS well and freezer generator would need to be replaced. In twenty-eight, we have the cabotat tractor with loader and the auto floor scrubber at BCS. And in twenty-nine, the BCS gym score clocks and the BHS infield groomer for ball fields. Chris, another question?
No, I don't. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. I saw your hand. Sorry. Okay, any questions? I can't see everybody, so. Ria?
Just one, one question. So does the grant that you're anticipated, hopefully, at least submitting, is that grant for HVAC considered in any of this or was it kind of? considered in any of this, or was it kind of-
No. That grant is, is for the energy management system that is needed at BCS for the next phase of the BCS projects, which, which would be the roof replacement and replacement of the AC units that we currently have, and hopefully the addition of AC to, to BCS.
Those projects would be through a bond or something like that. They want to be through the charter Kappa funds.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'll set the screen.
Yes, thank you.
So now we're looking for a motion to approve the Board of Education Kappa Plan to move forward to the Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, Scott.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sue.
Sue, do we have any more questions about any of the Kappa items or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who's opposed or abstaining? All right, we have a Kappa Plan. Now move on to Finance.
Monica, can Cassel have the screen? Please, thank you.
Just let her know that she can. She's all set for it.
Okay, Rhea, we're ready for you.
Okay, so the budget has been twenty-one percent expanded, and that is exactly the same as we were last year. And there are some transfers, not a huge list. And then, of course, special education is an ever-changing landscape. And, and now I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Heck.
Thank you, Rhea. So we have some transfers. Many of them are reclassifications. First one is to purchase additional storyworks, scholastic magazines at BCS. The next one is to cover shortfall in math online service and supplies at BHS. We needed to purchase additional ELA Scholastic subscription for grade five. Reclassification to cover additional e-text AP Biology books, because our AP enrollment was higher than anticipated, which is great news, good problem to have. Reclassification from BHS to BCS for the replacement of the, of an AED. Reclassification to cover instructional supplies at BHS for the new art teacher. And to purchase some kindergarten literacy resources that was not budgeted for, but that will support all students in small group instruction. To fund the interpreter services needed for some BHS students for this year, for when there's meetings with their parents. And then to reclassification in both Social Studies and Science at Bolton High School for the pair deck subscription. And then to cover the BCS portion of Grace Notes, which is Sight Reading Factory for Music at BCS, reclassification to purchase additional computer instruction supplies at BCS, and a reclass for ELA Classroom Library Books. We had an original budget for Digital Readers Workshop, but those resources are no longer available. Any questions about the transfers? All right, we will need a motion to approve those October transfers and and we can-
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers.
Thank you, Rhea.
Second.
Let's see.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about these October transfers? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed or abstaining? Okay. I believe that brings us to the BHS Student Representative Reports.
So Cassel, I'm going to ask you to close that out, please. There we go. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Michael.
Okay, I don't know if my camera is functioning right now. It doesn't-
Yeah, we can't see it, but we can hear you.
Okay, it doesn't seem to be allowing me to turn my camera.
You should be able to.
Aye.
That's okay, Michael. Go ahead. It's okay.
All right, back in October, the band and chorus, a small ensemble concert was held where students would break into small groups and pick songs to practice on their own. The concert went very well, and all of the groups sounded great. The boys soccer team won their game on Monday against Head and Killing Worth, and they had a game today against Old Saybrook. Cross-country ran in the state championships recently, and Silas Scorley and Shepherd Livingston both qualified for all states. And the seniors have continued to be busy applying to colleges and filling out their FASF forms as different deadlines are coming up.
Thank you, Michael. Erin?
Okay. So last week, from October the first to November fourth, Bolton High School held Spirit Week, and many people had dressed up and participated. There was also on Monday, the volleyball team had their state's game. However, their season's now over. And there was also National Honor Society on October thirtieth for the induction of the new members. The, the new members and their families had attended, and everything had gone smoothly. And lastly, there was a Big Z and Little Club event during connections. And everyone, all the Big Z and Littles came to play some board games and have some bagels, and everyone seemed to have a lot of fun.
Thank you, Erin. And unfortunately, our boys soccer team played this evening, but they in states and they lost two to nothing. So, but it's all good, but volleyball, boys soccer got to states. That's great. So good job to our athletes. Thank you, Erin, and thank you, Michael. Feel free to stay, guys, but if you don't have, if you have homework to do, go ahead and go.
Thank you very much. Okay, do, moving on to Community Meeting Reports. Do we have anyone who has attended any such meetings?
I attended the last Bolton Scholarship Fund meeting. It was our annual meeting, so we elected directors for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four term and elected new Vice President and Treasurer.
Do we have any other meetings to report on? All right, now I will turn things over to Superintendent for Superintendent's School Reports.
Great, thank you very much. First, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Giard for an update for Bolton Center School. Daryl? Daryl, we can't hear you.
Daryl, let me know when you want to start your video presentation.
Can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay, perfect. You can start it right now, Monica. You can put it up. Thank you. Let me know if I cut out or something. All right. Energy at BCS continues. Monica, just the slides. It's just the slide for the two bullets.
You want the present, okay, the presentation, not the video?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
This is a little sneak peek right here of the-
I get the excitement. I apologize.
A little teaser. And then just go back one. Go back one more. Perfect. So the energy at BCS continues to be very high as we return to many of the exciting and engaging events that we've done in the past. Grade levels have returned to field trips, and a few of those trips so far have been a trip to Foster Farm, a music event at the Coast Guard Academy that students attended, and a group of BCS and BHS students attended the Aerospace Future Workforce Opportunities Fair event at the CT Convention Center. The BCS Walkathon was once again a huge hit in October. That was on October twenty-fifth, and we're going to be talking more about that specific event at the December BOE meeting. But before we get too far away from that time period, I wanted to say big thank you to the families for their generous donations, and for the PTA for organizing yet another great event. Another shout out to the Bolton Fire Department, who came to BCS on October twenty-sixth to present to the K-three students about fire prevention. The students love seeing the firefighters in their gear, using the fire hoses, and looking around fire truck. Most recently, we had our first indoor band and chorus concert in a few years, and it was for the sixth, third, eighth grade students who performed very well, and the turnout was amazing. One of our favorite events is coming up, and that is our Veterans Day Assembly. The BCS staff and students are very excited to welcome Bolton's veterans into the building this Friday, November eleventh, for our Veterans Day Assembly. This is one of our favorite events, and we have over forty guests who have responded. They will be attending, so it's a, it's going to be a good turnout. The program will include a slideshow of Bolton's veteran sets of music, which is, which, we always do that one. That's a big conclusion to the event. Student performances from each of the grade levels, and several student staff kind of a few words and remarks throughout the program as well. So it's a, it's a great event. We're super excited for it, and it's great to have that back this year. I'm now going to turn it over to Mrs. Moore, our BCS Technology Education Teacher and K-five STEAM Coach, and she's going to be talking about the great things happening in K-five STEAM.
Hi, it's nice to see everybody. I first want to start off with just saying that it's been really great working at BCS. I've had just amazing experiences from every single person that I've interacted with, and so I just want to say thank you and great job building an awesome district to work at. I do have a slideshow I'd like to present, Monica, if you could. Oh, is it here? Oh, I, oh, I added some last minute things. I don't know if that is a problem.
That's okay. You can just speak to those, Dory. That's okay.
Oh, okay, that sounds fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the, well, the first thing I added was just explaining what STEAM is, because you might not be familiar. So STEAM is Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math, and it's just a change in education in terms of having, instead of just subject silos where you learn math in isolation, you're learning in like a well-rounded classroom where you're combining all of this learning yeah, in one exciting classroom level lessons. It's usually project and inquiry based, so you're leading the students to higher-level thinking and solving usually real-world problems. It's interdisciplinary learning. It's really exciting, and it's, it, it, it connects to the real world, and it's based on phenomena, and you're trying to solve, you know, challenges that would be real things you run into in your daily life. And it's just an exciting buzz in the classroom when, when, when you get it going the right way. So for the K-five STEAM role, which has been the new part of the position, that, just kind of what I've been doing in that role. I've been collaborating with the grade level teachers from K to five, and I'm kind of figuring out what works best with each grade. And it's been so awesome, because there's some grades that are just like, help us, we don't know what we're doing. Like in terms of bringing in big messy tasks. The science instruction I've been super impressed with in terms of the classroom teachers, K to five, they do a fantastic job with that. It's just kind of bringing them to the next level projects. And so some of them are like, I've been like, fourth grade, for example, was like, we've been wanting to do a erosion stream table, and so we kind of take that idea, and I am able to build an erosion steam table and bring all the fourth graders in, and they can model that erosion and decide where, where would be best to have their house or their farm with their cows and what makes sense over time. And it's just bringing those experiences to like a really exciting level with them. I also connect everything to the next generation science standards. And so it's really based in science engineering practices. Instead of just learning about facts, it's really getting messy with like stream tables and seeing erosion in that sense. It's, we do very big hands-on exploratory, hands-on projects. A lot of, I'm running out of storage space for all my mess, and you'll get a sneak peek of that at the end of the video that you will see at the end. But it's just, it's, I always like to phrase it as my mess means we're having a lot of fun, and there's a lot of good science and engineering happening. And the really amazing thing is that we have the ability to expose elementary students to unique STEM learning and what it, or STEAM learning. And what I mean by that is just, you know, with elementary school teachers, they have a lot on their plates. They're doing science, they're doing math, they're doing reading, they're doing social studies. And so they don't often have, you know, like a deep experience with engineering and science, but I'm coming from a background where I majored in the sciences in college. I have internships in, in field research with science, and I came from a middle school classroom, so we're bringing that middle school STEM STEAM learning, and we're bringing it into elementary classes where they don't usually get that deep instruction in terms of the engineering and related to the real-world problem solving. And then the last bullet point, I like, this just speaks to me a lot, is it's really fun to build confidence and get students just really, really excited about STEM and STEAM and science and math. That, all the studies show that young students, boys and girls, are equally feel confident and excited about STEM, but then when, when girls hit their tweens and teens, that just drops off their confidence, you know, declines, and they just don't feel like STEM is for them. But I, it's, what they found is that, you know, the skills are there for both boys and girls equally, but it's this kind of internal change that happens with girls, and so it's super important to build a foundation of confidence to keep them in STEM. And the teaching failure is part of it, because a lot of times you'll see in your female students that they get nervous about getting answers wrong, but that's the whole point of STEM. And so we're messy, we make mistakes, and we learn from it, and we improve, and that gets me really excited. And so I like getting having the fun class that gets students excited about their day. So with the NGSS, which is the Science Standards, instruction has changed. So when I was in middle school science, we had worksheets, and that's what we did, and we went outside and looked at clouds one day, and that's the only thing I remember, and we dissected a frog. But now it's moving out of that, and students are collecting data. So instead of learning about particles just on a worksheet, you are compressing air in a syringe, you're feeling that you're making models of matter, and you're teaching through doing. You might see in an older classroom, students drawing food webs from particular environments, but in an NGSS classroom, you're going to see students, you know, taking that to life and constructing arguments about how matter moves through the ecosystem and defending ideas and having, making claims. You can move past this one. I'll get to the fun stuff. I'm also working with a cohort of teachers at MIT, and it's an awesome outreach program they have for educators, and it's all about making practices and maker spaces. And the people I've connected with are fantastic, and they have very similar philosophies to me, and it's all about bringing joy, fun, really exciting collaboration experiences to students. And then as a result, they're, the results that you're getting, you're getting really good critical thinkers, you're getting a lot of creativity from students, they're learning that persistence and that failure is part of it, and that we're going to work together to get to realistic solutions. So my MIT training has been ongoing through the fall, it's been fantastic, and I'm going to keep up with them, and that's great. You can move to the next one. So these are just some pictures of projects that we've done. So this was with kindergarten. We, they, they're- We, they, their task was at Mystic Aquarium, they have to lift when they get, like they got a shipment, I don't know what you would call it, I guess a shipment of beluga whales to the aquarium and they have to get them into the tank. So the kindergartners were learning about simple machines. So we were working on ways to lift their whale into the tank and you see a little whale in the picture. And that's because we have 3D printers, which are fantastic and they're running all the time and the students are able to design. But it's fun because you can make the projects really come to life with these little beluga whales that the kids had, so. And then this was recently, we were doing States of Matter, so we were working with dry ice and the students were making some fun bubble art. And this is really cool, these are the Lego education kits. And so the, I don't, second grade, I think, was doing Iditarod. And we had the students build snowmobiles and then I had, they had injured dogs at one of the checkpoints and that, they're 3D printed too. I use it all the time. So they have the little dogs, they had to build a sled to hold their dogs and then they were programming the snowmobiles to drive it back to the base camp where the vets would then care for their injured dogs, so. This was bird beak adaptation, so the students had different feeding things where they were trying to, you know, get their food on the far right. The picture is the student had little marshmallows tied to a thing, like their berries hanging. And so they had different types of beaks, beaks that they're trying to feed with and they were just figuring out how different birds are adapted to their feeding styles. This was digging for fossils, there's a fossil museum in North Carolina that will ship you their dirt, but their dirt is filled with fossils. So the students are able to get their own little bit of dirt and they dig through and they search for fossils and identify them. And this goes with their finding things through time. We look at the geography and where they're located and it's really neat. Oh, this is, this is happening today. This is wind flood resistant houses, the students need to make a house that's going to survive a hurricane. So I 3D printed the house foundation with no door, windows or roof. And the students had a budget and they had to purchase materials and build a roof, windows and door. And then we put a bunch of fans around and I had water pumps and we were raining down on the houses and we had an indicator on the inside that I made that detected how much water, you know, made it into their house, so they could see if they survived the flood and high winds of the hurricane. And this is the stream table, so this was Aaron Breen's idea. And we were able to bring it to life. And so they had little houses and cows and they were able to see how, you know, different shapes of streams and different angles and different amounts of water and how that impacted the erosion. And this was earthquake towers, so you know, your classic, build like a tower that can survive. And then we had, I made a shake table so they could see if their tower was successful. And Rube Goldberg machines are one of my favorite things of all time. So we were doing energy transfer and they're taking the Rube Goldberg cartoons to life and trying to solve the challenge, which was to ring a bell. Kane's Arcade is a really awesome video, I highly recommend watching, it's like ten minutes. It's this really inspirational thing about this boy who took cardboard and he was in his dad's shop all summer and he made this insane arcade that is so cool. And, and it just inspired this whole cardboard creative challenge. So we participated in that this year, this was the 10th anniversary. Little Bits Engineering, the PTO purchased these kits for us, they're really neat, they're these circuits that magnetize together and you can create all sorts of things like light bulbs that light up, temperature things, counters, you can make LED graphics. And then we have a code bit where you can actually code things into it, but these were just simple projects we did. So the boys on the left made an art machine, so it drives around on those wheels and like does doodles. And then the girls on the right were working on making a car that when you shut the lights out, it will drive. So it's like detects dark and makes the circuit run or not. And then with chemistry in fifth grade, I've always wanted to do this as a teacher, so excited to actually have like the ability to make it happen. We did the whodunit mystery and the donut was stolen. So the students needed to analyze all the evidence and find out who stole the donut. So you did a white powder investigation, tests on them. We had fingerprints that they had to dust for and then use the microscopes to compare the swirls and things. And then they were also looking at the size of the drop and determining how high the drop came from to rule out if it was Daryl or not, because he's so tall. And I think that is my last one, which now that the anticipation has been built, the video is here, so roll it.
We're coming up with different ideas.
The new NGSS standards, they are talking about real world phenomena and applying your science and not setting students up to just know specific factual knowledge about things, but about understanding the engineering design process and thinking about how to creatively problem solve.
We're learning about earthquakes and how for a building not to fall over. So we're trying to make it as stable as we can.
It's really neat because teachers are fantastic in their classrooms, but it's really hard to set up big projects that can really get messy and help get that hands-on learning and that creative problem solving. So when they're able to come here, I have it set up in a way so that we can do the big projects and take the ideas that they have and make it a reality. That's really hard when you're in your classroom teaching math and reading and social studies and science on top of it. So they're able to come here and we can make a mess and we can get hands-on and hit those NGSS standards and really get some engineering design going on.
When we're starting a new science unit, we meet with Dory and we ask her like, okay, what ways can you kind of expend this for us? And she comes up with ideas or we present some options for experiments. And so it kind of just depends on like what we want to add to the science learning we're doing upstairs. So I've come like four times already this year and it's just been great for the kids to have those opportunities. We get to go to Ms. Moore's again, it's the best, they, they love her, they love the experimenting and all of that, they just love her. You have to think more like a scientist in her room, like some of the the ideas that they're coming up with and the creativity that they have in there, I think it's helping them to, to understand more of the scientific process and how they're able to, you know, come up with an idea and then try it and then, you know, go back to it and readjust their idea based on how it worked. So I think they're learning that process really well.
Well, I've come from being a seventh and eighth grade science teacher and this is the stuff that I was gonna, I was able to do in my classroom and this is the stuff that's happening in our middle school classroom. But you don't see this happening in elementary all that often because the amount of prep work and just getting the materials, having space to store the projects and spaces for the materials is just too challenging and it doesn't make sense in this timeframe. So it's really awesome to have the opportunity for these elementary school students to start learning these STEM skills from a really young age and putting them into real world projects that we can be doing here.
Dory, thank you very much. I will say, I wish I were in kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth or fifth grade of Bolton Center School and had you as a teacher. That was amazing. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Dory?
I'm very impressed, keep it up, it's exciting.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of glad I didn't have a teacher like me because I probably wouldn't end up being a teacher, I'd be an engineer, so.
Scott Rich would be happy to hear that. Anybody else?
I just want to say, Dory, this was a fantastic presentation and I'm so excited to see this happening in the Bolton Public School system. I want to hopefully support you in any way we can, because I think this is really important work. And I also, just want to have a question, so are you, so are you the only science teacher, are you a teach where the kids come to you or are you a supplemental science teacher? How does that work?
Yeah, so the K through five teachers are responsible for like the majority of the daily science instruction because I'm also doing sixth through eight tech ed and I'm helping out with the sixth grade skills class. So they're doing like the daily stuff, but then they come to me for, to plug in extra projects in their science instruction. And then they also have the sixth, seventh, eighth teachers are Allison Crusoe and Jess Pelletier, and they're fantastic. And so we work closely with them too. And so, yeah, it's supplemental to the daily instruction that the teachers are doing, yeah.
So she, so when we hired Dory, we, we sought a tech ed teacher who was also interested in being a K five STEAM sort of specialist, if, if you will, or coach. So not only is she teaching sixth through eighth grade technology education, but she's also in, in the coaching role for K five teachers. So all of our K to eight students at Center School have, have Dory and in some fashion or other and are, we're very, very thrilled to have her, she's doing great stuff.
Yes, I'm thrilled you're here, thank you.
And just one, one additional quick note is that in the video you saw the teacher teaching alongside her. So the teachers don't leave the room, they're learning as well from Dory who's coaching the, the current teachers in the classrooms along with preparing the project. So it's a many levels of learning going on.
Yeah, and they're fantastic. I just can't tell you enough how just the support has been fantastic, the, I just, it's amazing to have the materials to work with, the teachers are, have just been awesome. It's just been a great experience and thank you.
Thank you very much, I just wanted to say, I appreciate your analysis and pushback on the gender roles thing. I have two little girls in the school and I like them doing these kinds of things, I really appreciate it. And for everybody, honestly, because those are very important fields and I like to see us leading in these and then, so, thank you.
All right, Dory, again, thank you very much, feel free to stay, but you do not have to and thank you for a great presentation, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, all right, sorry, goodnight.
All right, now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Johnson, Christine, for an update from Bolton High School because Mr. Mocelli was at the soccer game tonight, Bolton Boys played Downstate tonight.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. The BH team has been busy preparing for the class of 2027. We facilitated outreach activities to eighth grade students in both Columbia and Bolton. School Counselor Amy Destinay has met with all grade eight students at Bolton Center School, has presented to grade eight students at Horace Porter School in Columbia and traveled to the Charles Barlow Magnet School in Wyndham where some Columbia students attend. VHS faculty and students hosted the entire grade eight classroom Columbia for a shadow day on October 25th where they visited several classrooms, spoke to VHS students and participated in numerous activities. This coming Monday, we will be hosting all grade eight Bolton Center students for a similar shadow day. This, Mrs. Destinay, Mr. Mocelli and Breland McDougall, a VHS senior, will also be presenting information to the Columbia parents later this month. I would also like to share some VHS senior news. As of today, forty-six percent of our seniors have applied to one or more colleges and seventeen students have been admitted through the new automat, automatic admissions program that Mr. Mocelli spoke to you about at last month's meeting. For more complete overview of the application process and how VHS supports our seniors, check out Mr. Mocelli's interview with Counselor Todd Jansanti on the VHS YouTube channel. As part of our return to more, more normal procedures, we thought the board would be interested in to know that we are currently hosting an intern and guidance and student teachers both math and music. All right, let's see what else we have here. Oh, Veterans Day. Lastly, in honor of Veterans Day, our Social Studies Department is excited to share what students will be learning. Grade nine students will have a poetry lesson written by veterans in World War I and World War II. Students will also learn about the Wall of Faces of Vietnam Memorial. Grade 10 students will watch interviews with World War I soldiers tracing their life fifty years after the war. The National Archives put together a collection of primary sources for teachers to utilize for Veterans Day, which Ms. Sacco will use in her African-American, Black and Puerto Rican Latino course. Students will examine the experiences from the lens of an African-American Black soldier. In grade 11 US history and in grade 12 psychology, students will learn about PTSD. While our grade 12 civic students will use New Zella to discuss the significance of Veterans Day. Students will also learn about the Twenty-Sixth Amendment and will explain the role veterans played in voting. Clearly, Veterans Day lends itself to our Social Studies Department, but others have also embraced and celebrated Veterans Day. Here's a slide, Mrs. Klepper, our librarian, put together some books that will showcase Veterans Day and our veterans. And Mrs. Boulay, who is a grade 11, 12 English teacher, will be hosting a guest speaker who will discuss his experiencing, experiences serving his country as a medic in Iraq, as well as the mental and emotional challenges he has experienced upon returning home from war. So that's what's happening at Bolton High School.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Christine? All right, hearing none. Monica, if we could turn it back over to Kasal for the grants presentation, please, thank you. Okay. So we're going to start this evening with some repeat information, but it's just a way for us to keep everything together for the various pots of Esser monies that we received coronavirus relief monies. The first one was Esser One Funds, which we expended back in FY fiscal 20, so I feel like we can kind of skip through that one. The coronavirus relief funds, we fully expended in FY 21 and, and I shared that information with you a year ago, so we can skip through that one, please. Esser Two Funds were awarded and approved by CSDE back in April of 21. We fully expended the seventy-six thousand nineteen dollars in last fiscal year. We spent fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars on Chromebooks, ten thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars on summer learning that had happened the summer prior to that and six thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars on supplies. Then we have the ARP Esser Funds for a hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and ten dollars that was approved. Our grant was approved by CSDE the end of June of 2021 and we intend to fully expend the funds by June 30th of 2023. Currently, we have a grant balance of ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. We spent eighty-four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars on the sound field system at BCS, thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars on desktop, teacher desktops, some summer, summer learning salaries, Chromebooks. The remaining ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars that remains is going towards AC rental at BCS for this year. It's not the full cost of it, but it will offset the cost of those AC rentals and six thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars for transportation. Any questions about those funds? Okay, hearing none. So we have additional grants that were awarded in fiscal 2022. These grants have to do with special education. The first one was for thirty-two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. We anticipate being fully expended by June 30th of 2023. The first one was for thirty-two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. We anticipate being fully expended by uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. This is Chromebooks, desktops and an iPad for special education uh, teachers and students. Certified orientation and mobility specialists, nine thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars towards that. And professional development for special education staff for four thousand dollars. The next small pot of money we received specifically for special education is for three thousand sixty-three dollars. Some of that will go towards Chromebooks, some desktop and iPads. And uh, the remaining part of that will go towards supplies. And then the last uh, well, next piece are Esser Two Special Education Recovery Funds for fifty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. Uh, that was approved back in March of twenty twenty-two. We hope to fully expend those funds by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Um, so this is in a couple of different uh, pieces. So I'm going to go through the first piece for thirty thousand dollars. Is for evaluation and training services for nineteen thousand six hundred dollars. And for supplies for ten thousand four hundred dollars. The next part of that pot of money is for um. Money that went towards the salary for the BCBA last year. So we've already expended that twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, that enabled us to return more monies to um, the town by having this one-time grant. Uh, and then we have uh, twenty-six hundred dollars to go towards tutoring. Uh, for student or students having to do with uh, dyslexia and, and recovery tutoring. As a because result of the pandemic. Any questions about those grants? All right, hearing none. We're gonna move on, please. Kasal, you with me? I don't see anything. Okay, so the next part are the grants. Um, it's an unaudited uh, expenses for our grants for last year. Uh, for IED, IDEA six eleven uh, special education. Uh, we had two hundred thousand one hundred and eight dollars uh, that went towards a portion of a special education teacher, a portion of a social worker, a full-time para. Portion of the occupation therapist, a one-to-one para extra for extracurricular coverage. Uh, pupil services and instructional supplies. For each IDEA six nineteen, again, special education, five thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars for pre-K PD. An iPad and pre-K instructional materials to support early childhood curriculum. We did not have any expenditures in Medicaid. Title one. Uh, twenty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars went towards homework club tutors, literacy and math, online subscriptions and instructional supplies. Title two for eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars went towards PD and math literacy and instructional practices using technology. Title three is specific for EL, uh, English language learners. For a whopping nine hundred and forty-four dollars. We bought some supplies. Title four per uh, was subscription to Gizmo Simulation Lab, teacher resources and supplies. For the newly created, this was last year, K five steam coaching, which you heard Dory um, articulately and enthusiastically described to you tonight. Uh, Ableton Live software to supplement Music Tech one and two at Bolton High School. Uh, we received three thou- three hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-two thousand thirty dollars. Thank you, Kasal. Uh, in open choice, uh, that went for the dean of students. Um, salary half or a part-time HR specialist, homework club supervisors, uh, various supervisory roles. Um, as well as PD leadership training, support for uh, students with hardships. Tuition for Magnet and Voag as well as for special education, uh, tuition for any choice students who are outplaced. Uh, PR videos, instructional supplies, subscription fees and technology needs. We received sixty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars last year for chef. Uh, a large portion of that went towards uh, a guidance position. Bigs and Little Stipend, quarterly newsletters at both schools, Capstone Stipend, Writing Center Stipend. Uh, a choice liaison at Bolton Center School and uh, PD. And then uh, team is uh, teacher mentors stipends based on the state's beginning teacher members. So you will see this number will be different this year. So you'll get a sense that we have a lot of new teachers in the state of Connecticut this year. Um, and so our unaudited total expenditures was six hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars. And last year we funded five point two three full-time equivalents uh, out of the grants. Any questions on last year's unaudited expenditure, expenditures? Okay, hearing none. If we could go to this year, please. Thank you, Kasal. So this is our projected expenditures for grants for this year. You'll see that uh, IDEA, we have a hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars coming in. Portion of that to go towards a portion of a special ed teacher, portion of the social worker, a full-time para. Point four of the occupational therapist and uh, pupil uh, services to support hearing uh, impaired students. IDEA has carryover monies. It's really like a two-year kind of rolling cycle, uh, the special ed grant that's at a federal level. Um, six nineteen, we had three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. We anticipate coming in. That's going to purchase supplies to support early childhood education and renewal of the gold curriculum there and the replacement of um. AT. And then uh, we didn't have any Medicaid. Uh, we do have carryover funds. Uh, but we did not bring in any Medicaid funds. And at this point, those carryover funds. Have to be directed towards special education students or special education needs. So at this point. Um, we don't have anything that fits in that category right at the moment. So. That just remains sort of in that bank, if you will. Title one, uh, receiving twenty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars to putting it towards. Professional development, uh, homework club tutors, literacy and math, online subscriptions and instructional supplies to support intervention. Again, title one is a rolling um, kind of every two-year deal. We did a carryover funds um, as part of that. Title two, nine thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars to go towards PD for teachers in reading and math intervention. Title three, uh, English language learner supplies again. Title four, ten thousand dollars. We're going to complete the purchase of the hardware for the Music Tech Lab, subscription to Gizmo Simulation Labs. Teacher resources and supplies to support the great work going on in K five steam. And uh, a large format printer to support art and design courses. Uh, that was a request from our new art teacher. So we're excited about. Uh, what that's going to be like for our high school students. In open choice, we are expecting four hundred and twenty thousand dollars this year. Again, the dean of students position, the HR specialist, the various uh, supervisory uh, pieces to support our students PD. Uh, support for hardship as well as Magnet School tuition, subscriptions and fees and technology needs and supplies. I just want to call to the board's attention that you may recall from previous um. Discussions at budget that based on our percentage of students, we were at the max of eight thousand dollars tuition per student. This past year, the legislature uh, raised the tuition rate. So uh, we are now going to be receiving ten thousand dollars per choice student, hence the larger number than we had anticipated receiving. Uh, chef monies, sixty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars fluctuates year by year. Uh, portion towards a guidance position, bigs and little stipend, quarterly newsletters, capstone. Uh, Writing Center Stipend, uh, BCS Choice Liaison Stipend. Sorry, my dog wants to participate in the meeting. I apologize. Then I gotta give her a bone. Sorry about that. Thanks. Um, as well as PD. Uh, team, which is again, based on the number of new teachers across the state. Uh, we're getting a whopping seven hundred and fifty-six dollars this year, which means there's a lot of new teachers. Um, to support uh, our teachers who are supporting our brand-new teachers. Uh, there are two new grants this year that we did not anticipate. And I think it's a, it's a result of uh, some further settlements in the chef case. Uh, one is an open choice grant to increase an attendance rate. Um, and educational enhancement opportunities. So to keep kids. Involved in or in any community uh, from choice as well as to encourage uh, Hartford students to choose uh, an open choice program. Uh, so we're doing math and reading activities for families, books for student book clubs, after-school literacy activities. Uh, branded school supplies for a sense of, of belonging to the school community, uh, PD. And for uh, and achieving equity and act early access and advanced placement courses and take-home books and activities to facilitate homeschool connection. And then the last one is the para educator professional development activities. Uh, we are using this. Uh, you may recall that uh, the legislature passed a legal requirement. The districts must now provide eighteen hours per year of professional development for para professionals. So we purchased uh, the Compass online training modules uh, to provide our para professionals. With uh, rich professional development and the technical assistance in setting that up. So total uh, net grant totals is seven hundred and two thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. And we anticipate in that that we will be uh, funding four point nine three FTEs. Any questions about grants?
Yeah, I have a question. Um. So it, can you talk a bit more about the uh, rollover funds? Um, because looking at the, or carryover funds, yeah, rather. Looking at the prior year uh, expenditures, I don't see any mention there of any funds having been carried over. Were they? And i- if so, where does the accounting for the spending of those carryover funds happen?
Kasal?
Okay. Uh, unaudited numbers, those include the combination of the carryover plus the um, new money. So when you're looking at the unaudited from last year, this is a combination of remaining carryover from the year before. Plus portions of the new grant.
Okay, so that, that reflects what was actually spent that fiscal year. Okay.
Yes.
IDEA is like a revolving door. I don't know how else to explain it. It, it, we wish that they would do something different with it than what they do. Um, it's just how the, this federal grant works.
Right. I, I was more wondering about the open choice because that's a significantly, I mean, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is a significant amount of money. To not have been spent in one fiscal year and then rolled over to the next. So if I'm understanding Kasal's explanation correctly, when we get this report next year. Presumably, the new grant totals amount for open choice will be four hundred and twenty thousand plus one hundred and nineteen thousand?
It could possibly be if, if, if we fully expend every single um. New monies plus the old monies. And yes, it'd be a combination of the two.
But I want to be clear, we, we will not be doing that, Chris, because.
Oh, right, right. I, yes, I understand that.
Well, I, for purposes of the record though, I want to state why. I know you understand it, but just in case anybody's listening. Yeah, right. Um, we don't receive choice monies until very late into the year. So if we were to not start with some choice monies, we would have a problem meeting some of our uh, obligations. Uh, with regards to that money. Um, and you know, we had earmarked uh, some things last year for choice monies, technology being one of them. That we couldn't even get our hands on. So uh, the supply chain uh, continues to be an issue for us.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for explaining. Yeah, I think that's, that's definitely helpful. Um, it certainly makes sense that if you're paying for employees out of these grants and. You don't get a grant until later in the year. You need some funds at the beginning of the year to. Meet those commitments. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Kasal, thank you very much. You can uh, give it back to Monica. Thank you, Kasal. Great job. That concludes my report for this evening, Chair Bronio.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I don't believe we have any unfinished business this month. Um, onto new business and resignations.
I'd like to inform the board that our human resource uh, part-time specialist, Brian Flanagan, resigned. Want to thank him for his service and wish him well. And then the Italy trip, we already moved. So thank you for taking action on that.
Yes, we did that earlier and um, to the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar, which we all got. Um, is an attachment along with our board packet. Um, do we want to talk about it or vote or motion then? Do we want to look at it or does that, did everybody get a chance to review it? It's pretty similar to this year, I feel like. Um, I guess I am looking for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar.
So moved. One second.
Thank you, Rhea.
Um, does anyone have any questions or comments about the school calendar? Pretty straightforward. Um, all's in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Who's opposed? Or abstaining? Okay, it was easy. We have a school calendar. Uh, how about a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Board of Education meeting schedule?
So moved.
You say.
A second.
Thank you, Rhea.
You sue and Rhea, do we have any questions or comments about that schedule? Uh, hearing none, all's in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Or abstaining. Okay, we have that schedule. Onto the BCS Energy Management System Budget specifications.
Okay, so I put this on the agenda in the hopes that uh, outside chance, I might have that information for you tonight. So let me give a little uh, by way of update. We are going to apply uh, for the HVAC grant, which is due December first. Again, I want to share that the state had a very um, fast timeline. And I want to thank Scott Rich for all of his guidance and help as we try to get all of this together. In the hopes of receiving some monies. I want to remind the board that we already have the monies in place. Uh, they were approved as part of a bond package uh, back in twenty seventeen. If there were additional monies left over from projects we had, this was one of the items that the money could be spent on. We have approximately a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars or so uh, to spend on the energy management system. On um. The Vulcan Range, if that needed to be finally um, replaced at Center School, although it's still ticking and they just don't make them like that anymore. Um, as well as a couple of other projects. Um, so. HF Lens is working on getting a professional cost estimate. That is one of the requirements of the grant. As well as putting together this, the educational specifications for this project. That you, the Board of Ed, has to approve prior to uh, me applying for the grant on behalf of the school system. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen because they approved the necessary resolutions that are required for this grant. Um, at their meeting last week and I received the signed motions and um, minutes from their. at their meeting last week, and I received the signed motions and minutes from their minute taker today from Kathy McCavanagh over at the town, so I want to thank them for that. So having said all that, I heard from HF Lens today that they, their goal is to have the education specifications and the professional cost estimate to me on by Friday afternoon, November 20. We then need to meet either that Monday or Tuesday, is what Andrew and I discussed today, prior to Thanksgiving, for you to approve the ed specs, so that I can then apply for the grant over Thanksgiving. So having said all that, we are going to need to figure out a time and one of those days to have that meeting. Any thoughts? Can we do a noon meeting? Does nighttime work? What works better?
It should only be a few minutes, if that helps us. I mean, we basically just need this information and then say, okay, good, and pass it on.
Do we know? I'm sorry, Sue.
I said, do we know the date specifically?
So we're either looking at, Andrew and I talked today, either Monday, the 21st of November, or Tuesday, the 22nd. At some point in time. What's that, Chris?
I can do either day, midday or evening.
Okay, thank you.
I can do Monday. If it's Tuesday, I would have to be the evening because I have jury duty, maybe. We'll see.
I would prefer Tuesday, but I would do whatever is best for everybody. So Monday's better.
I can also be flexible. Evenings are probably easier, but I can be flexible and do it anytime on either day.
Okay, thanks.
If it's Tuesday, I cannot do it at all during the day.
So could everybody do, like, say noon on Monday? I know that wasn't great for necessarily everybody, but above all, and I don't mean any disrespect to any board members, but I really need Scott there. So Monday, the 21st, does that work for everybody at noon?
The 20, yeah, Monday, the 21st at noon works for me.
Works for me.
That's fine.
Good for me.
And again, the, the expectation is the estimate that we, that they're going to get is going to be determined the amount of, the scope of work that we're going to be able to afford to do on this management system. So there'll be to craft the amount of work that gets done to match the budget, so it'll be, it's a pretty safe and straightforward process, and it's going to match the amount of money we have available to us.
Thank you, Scott. All right, I will send you all an invite in the morning for Monday, November 21st at noon. And I will also send you all a reminder, either the day before or that morning. Okay? Thank you. Again, thank you to Scott. He's been a lifeline in all of this, so Scott, again, I really want to say thank you so much.
It's just made a lot of sense to try to do it. The worst I can do is say no.
Correct. Yep.
And we've been, we're that much further ahead on knowing what the project is anyway, so.
Absolutely. Thank you again. All right, that, I'm done with that part. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, that brings us to the ever-popular future business. Do we have any future business?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so now we're looking for a motion to go into executive session for a discussion regarding the terms of employment, wages, and benefits for a unaffiliated employee for 2022 and '23, and also to invite the superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Sue and Scott. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining. Thank you for coming, everyone.